Rising.
Five, and we have a downed by Jeff.
Okay, 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 great. Again, now, here wanting to know comments on the work session, which was both helpful and also very prompt in turning things around, so very appreciative of playing board. I'm here to get that done. And I have a motion to approve the minutes. Kathy, Kevin the second, all favor? Okay. And then, we're gonna do one spot on the general, the Dollar General. Anybody here from Dollar General? Okay.
Just want to correct the address on the top of that resolution.
Okay. First of all, I think we've been through this, we were just waiting for Saka to return, to return. Hopefully you all see it. Any issues that anybody wants to address, like the sidewalk, or other things?
There was a comment about, is there a residential neighborhood directly above the property? In residential homes?
It's near, it's nearby, it might be right there.
I haven't ever seen one, I've done business across the street.
Yeah.
But I've not seen that.
For Dollar General.
Yeah, at Joe's Hall.
Just Joe's Hall, there's no residential, there's nothing.
Yeah, I didn't say.
Okay.
Last one.
The last one, okay, just wanted to check. I heard a comment in Saka about residential.
Yeah, I could figure it out, and it had to do with the sidewalk too, I don't know, I just, it didn't make sense.
Yeah. I'm just gonna take a peek real quick.
Any other issues? Okay, I'll read the, Dollar General site plan approval, thirty-nine oh five, new report, roads. Project, this board has reviewed the site plan application submitted as well as the site plan last dated January tenth, twenty twenty-three. The construction of Dollar General retails, retail store findings, the board has reviewed. The United County Planning Board referral to site plan dated June seventh, twenty twenty-three, and notes the modifications set forth therein. Relating to the coordination with the United County Water Authority and New York State Department of Transportation accepts these modifications as part of this approval. Board also notes that the rights, right way of the paper streets appropriately reflected on both the site plan subdivision, the same or affected by the plans. This board reviewed it. Yeah, updated one twenty twenty-three finds no significant adverse environmental impacts from this, for this project. This board has held a confined public hearing on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. A pending site plan for Dollar General project proposed on the site as well as the subdivision. There was no public interest in the project at that public hearing. Board granted approval to a simple subdivision by lots on May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. The applicant applied for and receives a variance from the zoning board on the heels on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Were parking on a site of thirty-five spaces, which are shown on the site plan inclusion. In consideration of findings set above, the board hereby approves the site plan set forth. Following the subdivision map approved May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, is a condition of the site plan approval. This approval is made with a further condition that the approval is for plans, other submitted documents, site plan documents that have been signed by the planning board chairperson. And the applicant requires that all the words shown be included by the applicant. In order for us to back and see if compliance be issued, any proposed changes, additions, list its scope of work or materials from the site plan documents. Subject to further site plan review for certain found to wit, code sections one nine two, dead one, one to two. If you have any. Okay, that's important, may I have a second? Kevin, all favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Appreciate your working with us. AT&T. Okay. I made the most of that. Is somebody here, Detective? Is somebody from AT&T online? The board have. Why don't you set this off, first of all, some responsibility.
Sure.
And what changes are within the fence?
Right, right, so, I get, you can all see the plans that are lighter, not scale, I think. Inside the fence. The height of the tower is fifteen, higher than it was. These are all changes, they basically come under the, as I stated, as it's in this resolution. FCC, their authority, sections four oh nine, what's considered, probably, completely not minor, not required. You need that over there. So. All the just station that.
Could we ever give an answer?
No, I did not. I know this is the first time, though, that's okay. I'm gonna look into it certainly for the main.
So then ask a question. If it does come back. Or pieces of pieces, if they have to replace these.
I don't know.
I don't. But I don't.
Needing a bunch of plank. Well, there's two, there's two types of hole, either guy wires and one is structural. The structural probably would not need, depending on how it was built. One of the guy wires are.
Nice question. Do they move the equipment off? Or do they just stack another roll?
They stack another roll, of course. Basically, I'd advise, I would hope that there's not much more. And I have a motion, and, you know, like, you know. There's. Right on anything. Basically, kind of. Organization, ten or something.
Right.
Basically, it's each, it's a company. That may call.
You can. What's the, the jury. It's gotta be something.
Sure, it's good, they always take. And the FAA. We, I, I was involved with W R. I think we asked about a, a Jason. Depends on. All right, let's move this forward. We have a.
Right.
Issues of aggression.
But we do have, so the resolution, because it does specifically refer to them, the parent perception, specifically about this. So it's, it's limited to this. It's for.
It's just that change from. Yeah, I know, I was, I was gonna read it, but now I haven't. Okay.
I know, I was very careful about the wording.
Six fifty, I, I, plus it, as a road. Motion to approve the site plan as stated, excuse me. Four, four, eight, twenty twenty-three, has submitted with the following findings and conditions, dislocations from modification. Agreed, so the approved site plan consisted of approved existing cell tower. And accompanying ground equipment surrounded by fence modifications to existing site or. Set forth the site plan dated four fourteen, twenty twenty-three, which was primarily a rendition of fifteen. Top of the tower. To grease the tower side, one hundred and forty-five feet. But it is housed inside the fenced in area and does not present any significant adverse changes to the sun. This board is review. Now, the accounting, a planning board referral made seventeen point three, which is a permanent referral. Have no significant adverse intercommunity or county qualifications, or determinative dislocation falls for the FCC, the lettering ruling section sixty-four oh nine. The board accepts the plans, saying. This approval is made with the following conditions, as we go for it. Plans and other submitted documents, site plan documents that are signed by the planning board chairperson, applicant. And requires that all the words shown be included by the applicant or, if, if, if. Any proposed changes, addition, provisions, for the scope of work or materials from the site plan documents. Not approved, or subject to further site plan review, resorting to the time to impose. I made a motion in a second. Lady, all favor? Prove unanimously. Okay. Next, is George. It is over, it's a kind of continuation of the original concept, he's addressing some of the architectural questions. I think we've covered all of the site plan issues. It's been a while, so.
Yeah, just. Good evening, Mark Wees, with them, we've some associates, William Walton, the architect, that wasn't able to come here again. So hopefully I'll be able to discuss your, the building and the changes that this board requested. So. With that said, also, Mr. Clary finally gave us the go ahead to start working here. Probably, he had some delays, possibly in progress in Florida. He's getting sick and tired of looking at buildings. Way that it is.
He's ready.
Let's get, he's ready to start going, so. From, from this point forward, we'll be preparing the plans for site plan review further. And dealing with all the engineering, the drainage, and the DOT, and everything else, so. I'll try to be, try to back your board of board by the next two months or so. So, with that said, if you want to put up the architectural, look at the, the building, the changes that were made.
You have a little, a drive, you, you have it on your thing?
I have some drive, yeah.
About the architect, sets, and everything. Finally.
About time. You can hear.
Oh, up on top there, okay. In fact, really were.
Yeah, sure.
So the building slightly grew in size from the last time by approximately one hundred and twenty square feet.
So you're gonna have to stop, Sharon. Right now, you're sharing just the. Behind it, see them. So, it's, Sharon. And then just share.
Thank you. So, the changes that you see on, on this elevation here. We'll call that, I'm not sure what he's calling it, but just we'll call it, I'm calling it north, project north. We, we, we added about a hundred and twenty square feet to this, this party room here. We also added a few with extra windows in here, I think two windows prior to that. Or, they, this, this entry canopy. Used to be a. We did metal roof area, now that it's flat roof.
Looks a lot clearer, so. I thought they did other. It's a question. I thought, what, you highlight the changes that were made. Yeah, the changes.
If I get that other plan up here, I could probably.
They're right, but not, I want to go back to the, the newer version, explain what. I thought, look, the later relative to the different elevations you had before. Yeah, it was like, but here, here it is. I think that those are the only changes. So I'm. To, if it were in, something changed. It's the back, that's the, the older. And this is the, what you see from the apartment here. At the side of the, where the, um, Amanti veterans, this is what they. Yeah. Nathan, go ahead. It's not kind of, yeah, yeah, situation.
No, I know, I think it's, I think it's still, it's just, it's too busy. I don't understand. But form, it's driving in. Back to, to the street elevation. And I also think, one day to ask for some perspectives. Interested. I think last time we just said, trying to dial it back, there's good ideas there, plan, layout. Let's see, got to the exterior, it just becomes. Auto materials, auto form.
See, architect here last time. He was, he was, it worked, I was the. Yeah, it sounds like we need a work session. We need a work session, but I also would like to get something in writing. I would ask Nathan if you want to leave the charters to, well, I, I'd like to be able to describe.
Yeah, I mean, I totally agree with you. Yeah, it's gonna be contextual with the rest of the neighborhood. I know there's not much of that neighborhood, and this also, I mean, hotels and.
Oh, my goodness, if you're gonna say what it is.
And Terry too, because I want to, I should rate it the comments out, I mean. Your role. Further. And I, we're responsive at least.
I'm trying to understand what the overall central.
Right, and maybe it's part of, part of me feels like in this. Part of it feels like green silo that's been added on to.
It's like this brown form with a ring, but the thing to the other side doesn't bounce, the other one's saying, okay, that's the open, it's, it's that, it's sort of glassy. It's like a key. Overall, the form to be examined needs to be responsive to the neighborhood.
And it all, yes, you were responsive to the neighborhood, we make a box, it says hotels.
Yeah, there's.
Well, I, I don't disagree, but I, 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 we need a work session up a little, too. I'd like to get something, because the architect is frustrated that he's not here, to hear these. Because it's hard to describe all of these elements.
I think, you know, maybe the work session, we, we work together at this point, and you can hear all your thoughts, and then come back with.
That would be.
Come up with a plan and try to read everybody's plan again.
I guess I thought we were here for this night, that was why you wanted to keep them. You have.
If I, if I say, just to put it in minutes, if we're saying that, think of we're writing architectural studies to be defined, for example.
No, it would help be as solid explanation for architect of what, what he's really trying to do, that before we respond. And because the renderings, it's, it's, it's been built, probably in. Revit or BIM, is what it looks like to me.
It's more rather sketchy.
Good sketchup. And there's, there's a lot of, a lot of effort trying to compose it, but I, I agree, and it's really busy. Struggling, I, I don't even know what interests is, I still don't know what interests. So that's where it's.
Sound of blocks.
I would get probably.
It's hard to kind of, with, with, with the whole, you know, east, west, north, and south, the size, it's, it's. It's difficult, you had to head on to the, maybe the entrance, you could get a better feel for it, but.
Yeah, I remember one, there were a number of comments last. One that comes to mind was, I was just curious why there are so few windows in the dining room. It's almost all big wall.
The owner didn't want it.
There's a, there was an outdoor seating area.
Yes.
Did that gives.
I don't know, just cut back because of the, the setup.
What's that?
This, the outdoor seating.
No, no, it's still there, it's all there, it's all this right here, that structure here, you'll see that, there's the pergola, or, you know, or overhead. Wooden canopy, which is here as well. And there it is, that elevation, and then there's a little bit, a little canopy at the entrance. It'd be like an outdoor, a little.
I'm gonna give everybody a chance, Kathy, what are your thoughts?
We need, we need a work session.
We need a work session.
Yeah, it's really.
Yeah, I agree. It's different.
It just seems disjointed, there doesn't seem to be a flow, and, and I don't know, when you say the neighborhood, it just, I, I'm, we're, just, when you look at the building, it doesn't have any, it doesn't make any, it just. I'm not sure the statement that it makes. It's different, I guess, and then.
I don't like difference, it's a high five of architectural language is going on there instead of.
Yeah, contemporary.
It's okay.
A duck is okay. But I, yeah, you know what it is, right?
So.
But I, I think it's, you know, for me, it's, it's, I'm not aware of the neighborhood, because neighborhood is a bunch of, not much. Therefore, the building should stand out on its own and be a complete block.
But it doesn't have to be a conglomeration of architecture. I would say, man. Joe. Got any yet, no, no.
Work session hadn't come in with the ability to, I mean, it's, it's modern, so, you can just see the same non-elevation, you can just see this thing. I'm sure he can bring his laptop in and spin it all for us live here.
And we could put him on for the Tuesday.
Would like to see a three D model?
Yep.
I'm gonna repeat this, because I, I say it backwards. The overall warranty needs to be examined further, and overriding architectural style needs to be defined. Need a solid explanation of what is intended for style, the style scheme, that's responsible by the board. Seems to be busy design without definition of style flow. Different is okay, but can it definition of style, like the architect to respond to this, then a work session. Add with like.
We really need the architect, it's a problem, you know, it was, you know. We, 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 you know. But, you know, I, all I'd say is, if it ever happens again, you probably should just, just have another work session. Because I, I, I don't really like you, you on the same session.
No, no, I'm okay. But I, regardless, I thought it was good to come to this board, just kind of refresh you where we are.
Yeah, we haven't been, we're excited about the project.
It's gonna be a huge. More months or so.
Improvement. So we're, we're actually moving along as well.
Okay, so, okay, thank you, thank you.
Ski company. I, I have color on, thanks, you want me to sand these around, or these?
Yeah.
The other people see it. Yes, please. Have you all, so. Have you all seen the, the email with the sketches? They were out yesterday, as a response to our work session. And I really appreciate Doug was articulated very well, and leave everybody that had. Excellent reaction to my first thought. In all of the. Yeah, yeah. So why don't you just, just hit the highlights of what we talked about on Tuesday, and the work session, and where we are now, and. I believe you refreshed those, but I want to make sure that. The one door, the single. Okay, so south elevation.
This is the south elevation.
This is the one, basically, check the leg.
So for the, for the work session. Our suspect was able to quickly turn around these changes, and hopefully reflects what we agree to on Tuesday. Previously, this breaking in portion of the building. For the block that was painted. Uh, we're now showing, uh, this, uh. Upper surface to match the other sides of the building. And then, Joe, these are one inch panels, right? Then, uh, we're on the entrance, it's on four inch. Match on the entrance. Or a face. Um, and Carrie is the same, uh, design. Now, I'm surprised. So. And that'd be just a body will be. It's how the.
It's a, that's metal. Metal.
Yeah, that, that's existing, isn't it?
It's existing.
If they're saying now. Did we go to restaurants? Um. Questions, I, I, I guess you're.
No, thank you, I mean, the new EBS and the wraparound and tying together, so that's, it's exactly what I had mentioned. So, and it wasn't, it wasn't a heavy. So, thank you for doing that. My only question is. If you were to depict where. This is actually in the design guidelines, the requirement or drives, if you were to depict where your top equipment is on these drawings, do you show that anywhere? Is it hidden? That is something I just require for submission, so I just, that's something that's for. Very, thank you.
That was my question, because it looked so clean, and I didn't, with the elevation of Chick-fil-A, you'll be able to see it coming down, but I, I'm, you can see it. Seal. What is the scope of that we've done? Everything we've visited. It's a journey. Yeah, I, I, I'm not touching it, I'm sorry. At this point, I think the applicant.
Well, that's where I am too, is the. But I really wonder how much longer they're gonna last, and is there a mechanism for us to say that if they are replaced? And we're gonna replace, that replacement. Proper screening.
Yes. You're comfortable with that? There's a replacement.
There's no replacement right now.
No, but if there, when, if there's a, when there's a replace. We would like to have.
The units are not one spot, maybe. I don't know how much better we're going around the screen in different areas. But when a pair could run a whole building, I know.
No, no, actually. There's quite a few projects where, uh, just rooftop. Metal screening, we're not, that one's good use, not building up, you know, four foot tall purpose, that's, you could drive around town. See that quite a few places. Be common.
Where it just around each piece.
Yeah. Either around the grouping of.
Yeah, but it's one to units. Different lots under roof.
But what we're saying is, is that each unit could be.
It's gonna be screened in a replacement.
Yes.
They're saying, yeah, they're saying in the future.
Okay, would that work with you?
I think it's a.
All right, yeah. Anything else? No, I thought, I, I, to turn this around in forty hours is impressive, but I appreciate the applicant's effort in this, and, and the supply for this. Uh, just hammer the.
Yes.
Modification of the site plan approval and subdivision approval, the panel comments stated. Four twenty seven, twenty three, thank you. You approve the plans follows, finding this is the modification. Site plan approval and subdivision approval stated four twenty seven. Twenty twenty three is set forth here in the proposed, proposed ski company building, which is shown on the plan dated six, seven, twenty three, is located on the current text map. O five, three dash, oh, six, dash, oh, two point one, in the town, the site. Is part of the property. Uh, project, which is a subject of the site plan approval and the subdivision approval stated four twenty seven, twenty twenty three. The project known as panel comments, planning board five, seven, two, one, oh, two, one, resolution approval of the. Of the four twenty seven, among other things, consolidated the light lot upon which this building is sit, is situated. With other lives to form one lot and one consolidated project, accordingly, this is. Modification of site plan approval and the subdivision approval stated four twenty seven, twenty twenty three, for the project known as Canalway Commons, planning board. Five, seven, two, one, oh, two, one, resolution four twenty seven, twenty three contains the following conditions. This approval does not include architectural review with a former Pier One building, as the applicant had not been aware of the intended tenant for the property, which may influence, uh, the architecture. It is a tenderness for the retail building on the single, the single site could be architecturally compatible with a proposed Chick-fil-A. Building approved herein and further than the town design guidelines. Next regard be followed, accordingly, the tenant must return to this board, a review of this building before certificate of occupancy can be issued for potential tenant of the building. The architectural plans presented for the ski company building formerly Pier One, and last dated six, seven, twenty twenty one. Are presented herein as.
Did it say twenty one or twenty?
Twenty six, says twenty one.
Well.
Well, I, I don't. Are presented herein as a fulfillment of the above named conditions conclusion, plan stated six, seven, twenty three. Dashing S three are approved as modifications to the site plan subdivision. L account. It worked on seven. With condition that upon replacement rooftop, what, of all rooftop, it will be wired, be screened as replacement. It would say future. Yes.
Can you just, I mean. Can you say, say again, what, your certificate of occupancy?
That was, that was the condition that we already talked about, and that we're saying this. So, you just repeated the condition that was in the last.
That was, that was the verbatim of what we approved. For Chick-fil-A.
And this fulfills it.
And this. Review and approval.
Going forward.
Cross. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, once we get to, let me just get my vote on this, and then I'm gonna ask Doug and Carrie a question. So, off-line conditions approval stated. Four twenty seven, twenty. Three, or full force in effect, unmodified incorporated herein. That's the vote, and a second, Kevin, all favor? Unanimous. Doug, Carrie, what do they need to get a permit that now, because, uh. We were, there were several floating around now, where it's organized, they've got their proof, building.
Could you say it's plans? It's changed.
As far as the elevation.
Yeah.
They have the floor plans and all the.
So we.
We have to get you, uh.
Well, no, there, there were like three termites that are pretty. Quested, but I just want to make sure we're, we've got, uh, under one roof, and then you're comfortable that what we've done here.
I think, I think every. Yeah. As the elevations then.
So they'll, they'll be, they'll be all set.
That'll take us to there through.
Yeah, no, that's. Thank you. The, the rest is administrative, who just working through. Sure, Tom, Raji, we appreciate that.
Yeah, well, I will. Appreciate you guys, Doug. Yeah, while, uh, it's getting set up. I had the accident, somebody. Email. You wanted to know if any board accepted artificial trees. Around.
Say that again?
Board, who said us? Supervisor. Artificial trees around the cell.
On cell tower.
Or, or, so he's not referring to the cell tower itself.
So. I've interpreted just artificial trees around the states. You already have artificial. Trees.
Well, it, it's a tree. That's, 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 yeah.
What's, you know, when they.
Yeah, we would. This is not something we would normally consider. With the exception that the, I, I would always consider it in replacement of a tower. And Linda is a good example of that.
So who more specific, specific related to what he's requesting?
I would be very hard pressed to put in our official. Plans or planning. We, we would look for screening on that bottom. You know, in terms of fencing, you know, like, like you said, at, at the, uh. You know, the little jaws or, uh, you did it, uh, an aspirated substation. Those kind of screening.
I knew it was.
Who's presenting, are you Andy or?
Hi, yes, hi, my name is. Glad to be here to walk this through our, our last review of our project here. Um, with me, I'm doing the team, they're standing out for our title. Your Marcus. Uh, we have Jason. Uh, in the original landscape. Site later. And then we have Arch from, uh. Quarter of. Um, we can, I know that we go over, do this several times, uh, I can go to. Sales. Um, but I think that maybe at the highlights.
Yeah, like the highlights, one, first highlight would be, uh, bigger substation was pulled off of, um.
Yes.
Yeah, for Bill Road, in fact, that, that we had asked for some more detailed relative to the landscaping, Doug, help me out here if I have anything else. Uh, cause that was more of a. Engineering plan, I just liked the landscaping, with specific species, so help us out on that one, there's only three D issues.
Yes, so what we, what we've done with, uh, Doug and Carrie's guidance is to come back and present all the site plan drawing. Civil, the landscape and ability drawing showing, uh, all the. The golden. Station. Up in this corner, here is where we located. Switchgear, here. Moved from the road here. And then, uh, we've also reduced the number of charges. She'll shoot you down to. So, um. We, you know, all the equipment, check that back from. Um, we have some screening in that area. You can see we, we have a lot of these areas. Um, we, we put purposely made red, uh, for the changes, so it can stand out, because these drawings are very busy. Landscapes and the species are here as well, those have been updated. And then we've got our. Species list here. These have been highlighted to show what we added.
Doug, have you looked at the, at the species, or is this your first review of this?
See. This is my first review, looking at the species. You know, the technical we talked the other day, um. I think it's some comments. Um. You know, once again, I mean, the, the drawings are at a scale that are pretty tough for me to read, and. Even, even when I get them on set plans, they roll out. Um. The other thing is out there, one of the things we talked about is. There's a significant number of trees out there. Uh, they're stressed, we could get it. I took a scientist out there. Well, to play trees. That are just broad. From the existence. Um, it was difficult for me to take a look and. Find out exactly where these units were laid out. With, with actual dimensions outside, so when our hotel search goes out, we know exactly where they are. Um, I think the board in the past. Had asked for renderings and sections. Of the different, uh, the different areas. Uh, I know one of them was like the switchgear areas. And they didn't. But. I don't see that on there, and the other thing we talked about, and several different submissions that have been in front of us. There were all these photos of Rochester and some different areas, and we said, was, you know, if we could get a rendering of what this is actually gonna look like, our. What it looks like.
Yeah, on this site.
In Rochester, and our site. Yeah, what we're looking for, right, so Peter's. Comment, hey, I mean, there were only two or three things that we're looking for. Um. Turn to the board, but. See some of this stuff in here.
Well, let's start with the, the big transformer. If you can go back to the, the drawing. Back to that. The planting plan. Back to the planting plan. Let's see. So that, when you zoom in. Like what I saw in here is. TDF boxes that have been dropped on the planet. I'm assuming there's pads underneath these. There are other details. And that's gonna happen.
You know, all the design details.
They are in there, so it's just not like they necessarily.
Would you show it?
Yep. Well, before we jump off this, I just want to. Make sure that, or we'll come with a screening tactic on this. The. Black star. Representation that's, you know, really, I'm thinking, there's stuff on the right, stuff on the left, I'm less concerned with screening, seeing. The road. But if you look at the plantings on the right hand side, what species are that? That. Simple.
Species all aligned with the original. Uh, plan to be. Putting the same trees, the same bushes, same species that were already. So something.
But are you appropriate with screen or? Right, there's quite a variety. Well, now, so where I was going with that is, it's building on this, those transformers are rather large. So what is that species to the right, that's supposed to be screening instead of. Is it a pipe that can sufficiently screen?
Oh.
We're not talking like a four foot armada.
No, yeah, um, sorry, let me, uh, Jason, um, you speak to the, um, so the species everyone. So. Yeah.
Yeah, excuse me, um, so the, you're, you're talking about those dark starred looking, uh, species to the right. Of the transformer, the switchgear. Those are all labeled as AL, which are white fir trees. And those. Those are all existing there. Just so everyone's aware.
Well, let me, let me clarify, because what, what those are, those are. Plantings that were existing when the building was. I keep, you know, we are. We haven't confirmed whether or not, I think that Doug mentioned, somebody mentioned earlier that they're a bind. Um, a lot of things got. Dry weather. Dry weather. Um, but. So we we added these shrubs. You're right, Jason was talking about what these are, everything around is existing. Um, and then two trees that are here. Gonna move back. Uh, to make. Skip. Save.
So let me just ask a question. Does that a common issue then? Doug, in terms of, uh, trees that are.
I what this really doesn't. It's more scary. Right?
But assume these things need to be accessed by the load, right? So they have all those trees across the pond. Is there a driveway to these? The ballers. The ballers in. You know, there's room obviously for safety and access and maintenance and such.
But it doesn't. You know, we'd ask from the beginning to have the detail on on ballards and just. What are we looking at and what's there?
Yes, they're intact. Everything is in the, they're in the set. Um.
Let's go back just to the to the drawing in the back right now for a second. Uh, to that finding plan, what I'm. I can pull up there. What I'm looking at is the area right now. The drawing that's up there. Barely. Dense in terms of planting, but what's actually existing there? Is. Pepper. So what's there right now will not screen. Uh, that transform. What's shown on the drawing may very well screen the transform.
Here's a, this is a PowerPoint we had prepared for you. Up through, um. If we should.
Well, wait, 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 before we go to the PowerPoint, I just want to have that acknowledged that that what's happened there now. If you're relying on the little stars to screen it, what we're hearing it from one of our board members that it's not screening. It won't screen.
I don't believe that we're relying on. Those species, Jason, correct me if I'm wrong. We're relying more on new plantings that are going to go in front of that gear. Those plantings were more on the side. I think the concern was more was primarily screening from the roadway. So one that we we're going to put in front of it. Uh, of that of that gear. Well, hold on.
Let's screen the.
Right.
No, it does. It does screen Kirkville. It's time to find that.
Bottom right somewhere.
This is, this is shows the gear. And then the screening that we're proposing in front of it.
Can blow that up though? Please. Is this from Kirkville or for anyone?
This is a section through the year. Um, going. Harsh, what angle is?
This is the road. This is the road which enters the property from.
This is looking at the switchgear from the building.
From the building.
Right. Facing facing the west.
Right, so these are the, these are the new trees that are going to be planted in vegetation. These trees have been pushed back a little bit.
Seven half feet tall.
And you can't get any more trees in there? To screen them?
Um, Jason, can you speak to the number of trees? I mean, these are the ones we're putting in front of it here. So you can see.
Right, so I, in my understanding is the board's concern is seeing this switchgear from Kirkville Road. And. You know, I'm going off my landscape architect that. You know, this is, all these trees are are what was previously approved. We added four new trees. On the east side, those four A Cs that Mark just mentioned. In front of the switchgear, so on the east side of that switchgear. Um, we've shifted a couple of the trees. Cause they're, they would be in conflict with the that switchgear. We shifted them to the west side. Uh, of the switchgear and then all the trees that are shown on there. Uh, from previously which. Whether they're installed or not or died. If they're installed or they're there, that will provide the screening from Kirkville Road.
Well, we certainly have in the resolution, the fact that any trees that were approved and are not there, we would want to have replaced.
I mean, this is your Andrew.
The other thing I was going to note too is I think these are four or five feet wide.
They're wider and.
Over outside.
Yes, and they're smaller as well.
The profile that you're looking is really kind of where that cone is on the left. That's coming out of that access drive. But the the right side of that, I mean, those things are only about four or five feet wide. And then you get back 300 feet for Kirkville, you put one or two trees in front of it, you can see. And the way they did the the four trees there is they're kind of staggered, so it gives.
We prefer that.
Right. Spreads it out a little bit more. So it might look sparse from. The viewpoint coming in off like that, that looks kind of sparse, but when you're looking at it from Kirkville and the way there's the trees are staggered, you're not going to see that.
And. I mean, I'm happy to, you know, Amazon's happy to, you know. Allow us to move forward with this, plant what's there. And then if you feel there's, give me another shrub or two, I'm sure, you know, we can work those details out and give you another push.
We've done that before. I just, I just want to get sure the board is where if we feel, we have a baseline and and if we feel. That it's, uh. Necessary to screen it further that, uh, that they'll be amenable to that. We don't want size. I can't tell if I can't see it.
Jason, those are 12 foot trees, right, that we. We're calling out to be, we're not planting small trees and and, you know, putting. I believe that we have the species called out that.
They're all on C L one oh three or all the species are called out and.
The sizes.
The sizes, yeah. And that's the size of planting.
Yeah.
So I mean, this was a couple of years ago. They're prob- probably a little taller now. But those white fir trees are called out as eight foot height.
Well, I think recovered is kind of like a situation we had with sound that it doesn't eat things. The task that we can. Have have more. I say we work it through. Oh, it's all.
Well, I would agree with what we do is we have a timeframe for the installation. And once they're installed. On, on whatever, and then. We would have them back in.
They, for these particular species. When they get the dog. I'm saying that they got to run by this thing.
Yeah, let's try. We can get them. This is.
We're ready to go. Got our equipment. About to jack here, ready to go, so. Get our building. You're going to give it to you.
Is the border amenable to that? Addition. I'm sure it was.
Well, I'd like to see a stagger wall of trees in the, I just don't understand why we're kicking stuff. Put in. Uh, dense screening. Trees. Final.
Okay. Did you hear that? Comment?
I mean, this is a rendition of what.
We're seeing, we're seeing that.
Yeah.
So it's for trees.
If you right now took two trees, they staggered a cone. Or when I was the. The bow outside.
Yeah.
And put it to bed right now.
Facing where you're standing, photograph. I understand the access from the front. And that's along the road right in front of us. I just don't know whether we can. And it's your screen. The span is pointing right here.
Well, Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, but if these trees grow, they do expand, right, width wise, so that you get more coverage as they grow.
That's correct.
So we're showing you what we're going to plant now in several years.
Let's go right back to the comment, the comment I'm expecting. If that's true. Then still add trees, you can brook that stagger at the right separation to create that. That overlap right now, it's still allowed to brook the tree. So there's big gaps. And right now there's two big gaps in that arrangement. I can put two trees in there, stagger them out another 60. Inside inside that stagger zone and solve this problem.
Can we go with that one? Can we go with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's the best.
Yeah, it was a dancer right here, so.
Let's be, we can do that.
We need some kind of drawing instead of photos for helping to what we're doing, right? And we just can't go up cartoon drawings.
Jason, do you understand what they're drawing?
Yeah, to me, there should be a spacing drawing.
Uh, there's a lot of talking, I guess, so it. So I'm understanding you want two more pine trees added in there staggered. Do you guys, does the board mind just marking up our landscape plan where you want these trees? I'll be happy to add them. It's just, uh. It, can you just mark up the plan, do a little sketch, tell me exactly where you want them? I'll, I'll be glad to add them on the plan.
You need to put them on there where you're comfortable they're going to grow.
Yeah.
I I don't know.
This is, what we're asking for is to make it more dense and stagger.
I think what's. We do have, we do have a minor issue here. Well, it's not really a minor issue, but there is a lot of very conduit in there. So there's a certain section of.
Well, that's why we can't stay in point. So you put them where you think they'll go. We want it staggered and and hidden and and. And if they're worried about the density, move them back and separate them, but make it that's enough so that we can't see.
You zoom back in a minute.
But when you say, it kind of concerned me when you say it's several years, they'll grow out. We don't really mind waiting several years. We like to see it fill out and and still have room to grow. And the staggering will do that.
We could add, we could add a few trees. Yes.
Okay.
It almost looks like one tree to the right of the two that are. You're right, we're now someone right.
The problem is that this drawing showed has a perception of density. And then we go look at a a rendering of a potential reality. We're seeing a bunch, two, a couple of big trees and we're seeing the, we're trying to hide, seeing there for all to see behind them. It doesn't show the small trees. So there's a, I mean, this is a perception game to me and. I'm like, oh, look at all that good stuff there. It's not there when we look at the render. So we have to be careful of what we're. What you're showing us is where the larger swinging trees are, how they're staggered, so that we. Don't see the item from the.
I think Nathan's point is a lot of the star plants don't exist in reality.
Reality, yeah. If there's 30 drawn on there, there's 15 in reality on the side.
So they're gonna add, they've agreed to add more trees. How do we?
Well, I, well, we should have a landscape plan, where the trees are going to go and the species. And how long it takes for them to grow out.
We, we have submitted, we have submitted a landscape plan, with the species. Under the information on the species, so. Um, I don't know what more information. To help clarify.
Mark, can you, can you bring up, uh, C L one oh two again? So in comparison to what we're seeing on the screen right now, this rendering from Kirkville Road. If you could just bring up. Yeah, I I see what you're talking about with the gaps. Where you could see the switchgear. So Mark, can you just bring up, or Harsh, can you bring up C L one oh two?
Yeah, we'll be able to.
Yeah, let's tell me. We want to go to the.
The landscape plan.
Okay, um. Isn't it? I'll be able to go there.
No, the, what we looked at before, where we were looking at these switchgear.
Or is there a way I'm able to share my screen?
Yes.
Go ahead, Jason. Yeah, share your stuff.
Uh, it's disabled from the host.
Yes. Yeah. You're not, Jason?
Yep. Uh, so can everyone see this, uh, this screen, my screen?
Again.
Alright, so that's, this is C L one oh two. And. The view that the, sorry, the the rendering that you just saw was from Kirkville Road. And you could see a couple of gaps in the pine trees. To see the gray switchgear, which. It appears to be that you're seeing the gap right here. And right here. Our suggestion would be to add a couple more pine trees in this location in between the. The four new A Cs that we just added. And this existing A L, so one in this location and one in here, and that would plug. I guess, fill the gap from that view that you just saw in the rendering.
Okay. Provided that's what's there now. If they're not there now, put them in.
We're just going to have an overlay of that drawing on the area photograph. And they're not there. Not in that, not in that picture form and.
Then what we'll do is we'll add the the four trees in the front that Jason detailed here. We'll add, I'll replace the two pine trees that are missing here. Why, two more pine trees to fill that gap.
And replace any trees that are missing.
Yeah.
But this is not how we can only do this. I'm looking at Doug and I'm saying, we, we need a plan that shows that. Those are what you're going to do.
That's fine. I can give you that plan. I I think that. What we're hoping for tonight is if there's a mechanism that you can give us a contingent approval. Gives you those updates so that we can get our building permits. Submit them on the building permit and supplement it back to you. I don't know how that wants to work. You have my commitment, you have the meeting minutes.
It wants to put in the switchgear. Pardon?
You know, the other option, the mechanism we have is the CEO for the project. You just don't get to. How much the power?
You're already in the building.
Yeah.
We can't. Something about the CEO of Angel.
It's it's not normally how we do business, but we're talking about. Getting, I like to have. A more dense, just what we talked about, we want to see them, whether it's a CEO or whatever else we have.
I think you're being a little more, I think I've heard something much more specific. And I am more than happy to write it down here.
We could be more specific, but at the end of the day, I'd still like a final review to make sure that they do the job.
So.
Okay. So. If I understand, I mean, this plan was already approved previously. Now, if, I guess, is the board amenable to if what's shown on this screen right now from Kirkville Road? All the way to the switchgear is installed. Along with adding two new pine trees to shield those two, uh. Gaps that were shown in that rendering. Is that what the the planning board is looking for? As long as what's shown on the screen here from Kirkville Road to the switchgear. All those plantings are there along with the two new pine trees that we said we'd add. Is that what the town is looking for?
So if that's a yes, I don't know what it is, but if it's a yes. Then it is Doug just pointed out, it could be much like a lighting plan, which is. It's approved and will administratively review it. Within. Because it looks to me like. There's the plan. If they come back, there's like four trees there, you had it, right? And that's the plan.
The intention plan is that. Is to Jason's point, the remainder has to.
What's shown needs to be.
Yes, sure. Stress free entries.
Well, we recover that, any trees that are were in the original approval. Need to be in. Replaced or if 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 they're not, I mean, I think we can move forward with this administratively if you and Terry are comfortable. I don't think I'm.
I don't even have the mention on.
But they're not going to be on.
But how's the size of them?
Oh, the pad has.
What's the size of? Okay, then show me. Okay. Hold on.
Jason, can I have a control back?
Yeah, I'll stop, sure. Uh, yeah, I'll stop, sure.
It's gonna be very difficult to set a cones officer out there and say, what's the size of this pad? Where's the location? What's the offset? Right, what's the offset off the curve? I mean, in that drawing, you're shown, it shows a, a tree. It's been going on six months.
I'm sorry, sir. I'm trying to help you.
Okay, alright, let's, let's, let's all calm down. What we're trying to do is move this through.
Yeah, let's see the, let's see the size.
The offset. Arsh, what's here are the details of the pads on, sir?
Uh, that would be for the switchgear itself.
I'd like to see the offset on the curve.
Just a second.
I'd like to see where that offset.
Mark, would it be easier to give harsh control?
Yeah, I just want you to go ahead and pull up the drawing. And bring it to where that's shown. Please show me the offset off.
Just a second. Anybody see, see my screen? So all the cut sheets have the.
So I'd like to see the offset off the curve. I don't want to see a cut sheet. Dimension off the curve.
There is a site. Site location.
Yes.
That's.
That's what I'm looking for. Yeah.
You are looking for the site location of the pads, am I correct?
Yeah, zoom in on that drawing. What is the call out? Where does that take you? That's the blow up.
These are the two equipments as per our EV cut sheets, the actual site plans were submitted.
That's just for the electrical. What is the call? So if you zoom out a little bit, the call out take you to what drawing? On the right hand side.
Here?
Yeah, what's that detail?
Two EV. Drawing or detailed two on EV one. Something. So that doesn't, that doesn't provide the information. So what I think we're looking for is on the site civil drawing. A sighting plan, the. Place a point that shows the dimension from the curve. How big the pad is, where it's located.
I'm the contractor, I put out there what I put.
Yeah, and it's the first question as a contractor that I would ask.
Yes.
And then you're the construction guy, right? So if you were given that drawing. And somebody said, go put the pad out there, how would you know where to put it?
So these pads would be placed as per the, all the existing conduits which are already underground. That's what this first general note says here. All conduits shown here are existing. And the location of these pads would be as per the existing conduits wherever they are stubbing up. So previously, we were planning to have these equipments right here. But as per your request, we have moved them back. So now, uh, these equipments, the stub offs which are up here somewhere. They will have to work on the stub offs here, locate the conduits and as per the, those conduits location, they will set up the concrete pads and equipments.
Right, so the, the new conduit, it's new conduit to, to extend it down to that point, right?
No, so basically these conduits are already running from, from the very left. So they just have to work it from the national grid pole up here. That will be the new line and these conduits are already running.
Yeah, so the new line, the new line that you're running from the national grid pole.
Correct.
Is running to the pad, right?
Correct.
Right, so that new conduit and the new line does not exist right now. You need to run that line.
Yes.
Okay, so and the, the pads are to coordinate with that new line.
Correct.
Okay, so then from there, I would say you don't know where the conduit's going. You don't know where the pads are being located. I understand that it's being coordinated with those conduits, but it has nothing to do with the existing conduits that are there. You just don't want to probably impede on them.
Basically, we have, we locate the conduits and based on that, we place the pads as per the dimension provided in the cut sheets. So we locate.
There's no location.
How, how do I know where you're going next? How do I, how do we review, how does our code department? Review this and know where you plan on putting that? So when they come out and see what you're doing. They can go, oh, I see, you're twelve foot six off the road versus twelve four. That's because of the conduit.
Well, on the property line for one, but you know, across the road, like, how far from the road do we know where we're, I mean.
So this, this switchgear has to connect with the existing bu- building transformer.
Same way I'm drawing the other. If it's off by two inches because the existing conduit's there, we can find, take it up and find it. Great, but at least we know where, and then. So we know we're acceptable, acceptable.
We know where the trees are going, or it's social proximity.
Right, and he's saying to the side, so. So we, we can. We can get it plotted, so it's off the curve. We got a measurement off the curve.
Yes.
And then. The problem is, is that we just, we know the conduits there, we just without having it marked and everything.
Well, I mean, at this point, you almost need to, you need to locate it off the property line. It, it looks like you're trying to put it as far away from that conduit as possible, right?
Well, we're trying to get it off the road, which is a clarification at this point.
Right.
Yeah, correct.
So. You would like to see this dimension, right?
Either so.
There's a.
That's what may help.
Now we know where to build it. And where to, where to review it, um. Alright. So some of the other points, like, I, I mean, I think we beat this one pretty good.
Yeah, well, that's where I'm going.
So, one of the other, I just want to confirm that all the other pads, everything out of the floodplain. Not the one thing in the floodplain.
And one hundred year flood boundary?
Buffer zone.
At the buffer zone.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're gonna follow the compliance of the covenant that the D E C prepared for the.
What does that say?
That says that we can, we can put those where they are shown.
It's nice. Is there a note on that that says that?
No.
On the drawing? It says you can put them in there.
We have, we have the letter from the original build that's.
But is it on the drawing so that they go out there and say, alright, we're.
You're in the, you're in the floodplain, but you're.
But land. No, I don't believe we added that note. It was already.
We attached that with the permit?
Yeah, it was just, you know, ruled on by this.
Yeah, I'm just more concerned with those. Those sitting in the floodplain. I guess D E C allows you to put brown mounted equipment in the floodplain.
Well, there, I don't know the specifics of the covenant because I wasn't involved at the point where that was determined. But my understanding was that before. The current landlord or owner bought the property, someone had done some work that had bringed on, on your floodplain. And the covenant agrees to expand that, but what was, what was impacting. And be therefore not part of.
And you got it documented by the.
That's in the file that we, we sent to Terry, since all of us that provided the covenant and all these details.
Alright, well, if you can get the, we just talked about the trees and the placement, the density and the sighting of the pads. Doug, what else did you have?
Can I just get a cle- a clarification on the purpose? Add dimension location. I mean, the drawings are prepared to scale. The contractor goes out there, um, for the site surveyor, calls the, uh. Control point from Jason's that he established when in the original building. So he showed on the drawings as pointing to the feet off center line of road. That's where it's gonna go. So I'm not sure of what that dimension does to you on the drawing, but you have to provide it. I just, like. Again, I don't want to have.
Well, well, we're, I'm gonna, you're not gonna come back until we get something that we can review. And that's acceptable to our, our consultants. And then say that this is something that is. We're not. Some of us are architects, some of us engineers, some of us are, are very lab. We need and rely on our consultants. To say that this is. Where it should be. And we have. Landscape architect looking at the trees and the species and the size, and then we look at the whole picture. And as you can see, we can't really look at the whole picture because. Consultants haven't really released the fact that they know where the pads are. Uh, we've started proving that the trees are, you know, not. Not screening the way we'd like to have them screened and we'd like to see those drawn in. And it, and I think Andy knows exactly what we're looking for. He's been here enough times, uh. So if you could provide that, we can have a work session and.
Pardon? Can you keep me guessing?
Well, it shouldn't be this difficult. Let me just say that. And I don't want to make a, a planning board be into a work session. We've sort of asked for this for the last six months.
Yes, sir.
Very candid.
And we reply to specifically. Questions you asked for.
Okay, well.
And now this, this big dimension. It's been brought up and I understand the reason why in the servant board, I obviously, you know, wanted to make sure that. Board.
Yeah, we want to make sure, we'll have a comment letter that will.
I, my understanding. You know. I've been searching for a long time to, you know. If the drawings. They're to scale. Measure off the scale.
Only the architecture.
Yeah.
Jesus. That's the state of the light with the site plan and you have a survey and a set to start from. That's how site work is done. Am I wrong?
Yes.
But you don't rely on a scalable set of drawing.
You don't scale it.
Rely on set of, of setting considered established that you. By who? And other surveyors would set. Okay, but what happens, what, what is, what does Doug's guys?
I think you're right.
How do you usually know you're right? If you go over there and take a tape measure, you go off twenty-two point, whatever feet it is. That's what he's got to work with, right? So you're gonna have to do an ASB afterwards. Right? But how are they gonna know that for the, for their building? How would they know that?
Mr. Chairman, can I speak for a second?
You don't measure.
Wait a second, let me just carry this through. Just, let me just. One, one member's asking a question. Do you want to answer that question? Feel free to answer.
No, I just wanted to, I wanted to, uh, just ask a couple of questions, but when you're done.
Okay, let's just, are you, you're done?
I'm done, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
So from what I'm understanding, I, I guess I'm asking the question. Is it amenable if we add those two trees that we talked about, the pine trees to, uh. Screen that, those bare areas that were shown on that rendering? And then also add to the site plan, the dimensions off the face of the curve to that switchgear? Would that satisfy this, um, issue with the, the location?
Kevin, you had something to.
No, 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 I was saying that I was okay if they addressed those issues. Those are the. But.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Just, he's saying, just add, add a couple of trees and add the dimensions.
Yeah, I think we need a sighting plan for the pad. We can add the additional trees in there with a note that any. That should be planted according to the original. On a, on a slide on two. Yeah, none of the like, it should be on the site plan actually, if you want.
Yeah, I mean, that, this is, this is an easy fix for the site plan. You just add those two dimensions from the face of curve to the. Now, uh, is this site plan approvable with conditions that we add this stuff to the plan?
Yeah.
Okay, anyway, you know, you agree with that? Is there anything else?
You ultimately hold the power right now to not issue the permits. As long as what we've asked for shows up on drawings, you get it. I don't know that.
Okay.
We need to continue to keep this down, I mean.
That, that's my point. I wanted to, I'm delegating. To you administratively to make sure that what we've just asked for, we'll put in the resolution. Um, if we approve it, that, that you're comfortable, then you have. You won't issue the permit unless you have what we, we've requested. I mean, I think we, we believe that the intent there, we understand the intent. Just need the definition. That's in there, the definition.
And how to verify.
Right.
Where things are, where you plan on putting things, how they're also verified.
It's fine with it. Okay, Kathy?
Fine.
Doug?
Yeah.
And, and just to be clear, that it's just those two swi- the two main switch gears that are seen from Kirkville Road that you're asking the site. The dimension for the, the switchgear to the face of the curve, just those two switchgear.
There's those bollards, right? There are bollards, it should show the bollards to be.
The bollards are shown on there. We can, we can show the dimension to the bollards as well.
Where, where are the other switch, how many other switch gears are there?
To me, to me, there should be. I think what I'd be asking for is a simple site layout plan, well enough of that area. That shows the transformer, the size of the transformer, the size of the pad it sits on. Eventually located off of something that somebody can find, i.e. curb line, base of building. Or triangulate to a control point or two. So if someone brought there and verified that or look at it, it's there. And then have these screening trees that are specific to our desire to have a screen. Have those located off on that same ground. The dimensions and center line of each of the trees, you know, spread out, just far five dimension strings on there. Done. It's literally that simple.
I, I just, I, did you hear that, sir?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
The only, the only caveat to that is if they, if they say they have the conduit already in. That they may have to move it depending on how they route their conduit.
But that's something we can do in this.
But at least, at least we're.
Yeah, but anything going back is already in.
Yeah.
Like.
Yeah, right there and they're moving up, so it's.
Are you gonna have to maybe move that depending on where that conduit is, if you don't know where it is, say?
No, we, we ran all the conduit there when we built the building. I was part of what we did to put the. You know, things may move back, you never know, right? You know, in, in our.
But it is northeast.
So we're gonna obviously have to do, go through, do a, a ground vision radar, make sure things are where they're supposed to be. Uh, I'm sure that I dig up some of the areas.
Well, we can, and then you go out, but. Look, you see, you got two switch gears. What, tell me about the other switch gears. How many other switch gears are there?
So, uh, these are the main switch gears. Apart from that, we just have, uh, transformers and, uh, switchboards. Panel boards which will be feeding all the chargers. So, uh, when you, uh, the power from the utility comes to these switch gears which goes to the building transformer. And then all these, uh, line conduits which are already laid out are fed to these transformers and L V S Bs. Which are low voltage switchboards which feed to the smaller transformers and then to the chargers itself.
Man, I gotta tell you, man, you lost me.
Yeah, I, I misspoke. There's, there's only two switchgear. I'm not an electrical guy. I'm sorry. The, there's just the two main switchgears. The rest are transformers and, uh, and panels.
Two red boxes of the switchgear.
And now, how, how many transformers?
In total, we have around fifteen transformers on, uh, across the site.
Fifteen transformers and they're, they're located in, in, in around the areas that are getting the EV. So this is area. A. And area B.
Are these the, the ones that you showed us? How, how big are those transformers?
Those transformers. Arsh, pull up the, uh, cross section. Well, wait, I think I might have.
Yeah, it's a little Manchester.
Those are, okay.
Uh, people's side, right?
Yes.
Arsh, pull up that CS one O, CS one hundred drawing.
Alright, this is from another site, um. Arsh, you have to share screen again.
Uh, I think my screen is sharing right now.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just pulling up CS one hundred. It has the section.
You just went by it. There you are.
Right, here we are.
This is in the drawing sets as well. This shows, this shows the other switchboards, transformers.
And now where's this view from?
This view, this section is for this particular section.
Here that, that shows you all the better information.
And we've talked about this, just to help me out, uh, just look at you because, uh, which, are, are these, can we see these in the road?
Yeah.
They're being developed.
But we still need to make. But we still need the dimensions on that because it's, it's, uh. When.
Plotting dimensions? It's just like, yeah, I always weighed out.
Just the, the dimensions of the units around.
It's got the units.
Six one.
Yeah, okay. Where, where's that section A A taken? On, on, on the plan? You show me where that is on?
Yes. Jason, yeah, right here, section A A.
Yeah, so this, this drawings is section A A. It should be referenced how they drive. Okay, it's a sentence. We're doing this for the one that shows. Yeah, which is, so, so one direction is second A A.
A A is taken, the back is to the building. Close to the driveway.
Yes. Looking straight line.
Yep. Here it was pointing up. Yeah. Twenty-one.
From here. Okay. All right, I'm gonna bring this to post. Uh, are we all right with the?
Yeah, I'm sorry, sir. I, I don't. I just want to make it clear. Um, when, when we talk about replacing the two trees that are missing.
I don't know if they're just two trees or I'm, I don't.
Yeah, that's, that was my question before to ask them that.
Any tree that are, were, were approved on the original Amazon building that are, are missing need to be replaced.
Add.
Or ends. You're looking at me like that.
So if you go back.
No, I, I, I understand. I'm, I'm looking at you because. That, I'll have to go back and get approval for that because, you know, we have C V. So that relates to something else. So I'm, my hesitation is for you, it's for how am I gonna figure that out? Tell my people.
I'm gonna give that to you.
We're more like, so, yes, I just, I just want to make that clear because if I went out there and just put the two trees in. And that's what I thought. We talked about the Malaport is the A that.
Yeah, your, your responsibility for E B is probably those two.
Yeah, yeah.
The responsibility for the project is to make sure that what we've shown and approved in previous planning plan. And what we're reviewing now, it's integral part to the screen of the whole, whole site. And if they're not there, then, then. They need to be replaced. Yes. But we, it's a good time now to.
Okay, thank you for that. That helps me understand.
Well, we, we don't disconnect you from the primary.
Yes. Well, right, we're, we're not, this, excuse me, but whenever the C O was issued here, it should have been an ASBIL. I guess so, we all, we're out there.
Yes, I believe those answers were valid. Need to get out of there. I know that was.
Um, you got this.
I mean, I mean, give it a whirl.
Okay. I'm gonna, cause I get late.
Okay.
I mean, everybody ready?
But you guys don't listen here. This is, this is drought, right? Um, the applicant is required to prepare a simple site blow up. Of this plan which shows the following, the pad dimension and offset. And off the curve. This is switch. Switch gear.
As well as. The trans.
The set of transformers.
Set of transformers.
And that's south side of.
The other ones.
Yes.
Okay, I get to that one.
Okay.
Switchgear pad dimension. Um. Uh, visible from fire or road. Getting on my nerves today. Visible from. Kirkville. And the offset of the pad off the curve. Number two, all the landscaping shown on this current plan. Must be shown.
Must be installed. So installed.
It's current plan and.
Is, is showing us. Add two appropriately spaced trees of what's east.
Similar to what. Yeah. Like a timer, like.
Curve is shown on, on currently.
And then when you had to double back and, and make sure that the other, any cheese.
I, I got it. And, and the size is what you want.
It's shown in the. It's shown, it's shown in the drawing. And again, Doug will have a chance to carry to do this administratively. Make sure they need this before the purpose issue. That's a condition.
With the intent. That is to add additional screening of the switchgear. So all the landscape plan is shown on this current plan must be shown. And add two additional appropriately spaced trees of, of, uh, same. As, as shown on the plan currently, and the size is shown with the intent that the plan is to add additional screening of the switchgear in the road. With the further condition that any planting on the original plan that does not any longer exist needs to be added. When the site improvements are done, it is, as it is clear that some of the starred plants on the plan do not currently exist.
Or are in, uh. What do you call it?
Or are.
This.
Okay. Also, add a blow up of each additional switch pad and the dimensions. Uh, off of the, of a fixed site, fixed point, right?
So you're just curved, doesn't that work?
Curved.
Sure. Can you go back to that C L one hundred drawing again?
Off of the curve, wait, wait, Doug. We'll, we'll come back to that. Um, add, add a block of each additional switch pad and the dimensions off the curve. Um, other than that. For the road visible on, like. Um, then the plans, these plans are going to be, uh, due to be delivered later, delivered to the idea, uh, department's plan.
Why, why, why are you proposing delivery of, of the plans?
Um. I've talked to my team, but I would imagine we could get it done early next. Oh, yeah, and then I'm done in two weeks, I'm gonna have some.
Well, it's, it's always fast, it'll be reviewed as fast as we get.
Yes.
Will be reviewed, will be delivered in two weeks of today. Um, the department, um, shall determine the sufficiency. Of the plans, uh, and that they are in performance with this. And if, uh, they are. I'll use better words, it's getting late. And if they are, um, then a building permit can be issued.
Administratively.
Can be issued administratively. Um, there was also. Okay. Uh, then we'll have a condition that this is a modification to the original site plan. Um, and except as modified, it's in full, the other one is in full force and effect and any conditions of that. And then is there anything about the ASBIL drawings?
We need ASBIL drawings, uh, that they should be, ASBIL drawings for the, we call it phase one or the. Really call it Doug. Verified that Doug off, Doug's not, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah. Mark says that they were sent in. Right, so we've verified, I don't, I don't think we need to. We don't have them. We need them. Pull up that C L one hundred drawing again.
Is it, is it, I think that's it from, right?
Yeah. Is that right? Doug, you're, you're, you gotta go here for that.
Harsh, go to the back, go to the back. Harsh, go to the back part of the area.
Yes.
Please, that lower corner.
Thank you.
Zoom in, yeah, zoom in there.
Yeah, I'm able.
I like it. Wanted to be. So, so what, what's going on there? I mean, something's underneath the tree.
Yes, those are the equipments, the small, uh, transformers, panel boards, and the tree will be located. To adjust these equipments, bollards will be placed around it. Uh, these are the IPACs which are the small transformers and panel boards. Which will feed to the charges directly here.
What are those DASs?
Those are bollards.
These are the bollards.
Yeah, yes. To our point. How do we know that?
So, yeah, there should be a.
They are mentioned.
It's like detail that.
So on that same drawing. That same drawing?
Yes.
Slide down. Love it. What's going on here?
The same thing. These small panel boards which are being fed by the big transformers. Will be feeding these chargers right here. It's the exact same setup. The same thing repeats again and again for each charger. Uh, from four to eighty volts, we come to two oh eight volts which feeds the chargers and these panel boards. And these transformers are needed, which will be protected by these bollards here, and they will be feeding these chargers. Is the same configuration after we move from the switchgear, the main switchgear is the same configuration everywhere. Transformer, panel board, transformer, panel board, switch, uh, chargers.
Is the best time to transfer? Transplant mature trees?
I'm sorry, I didn't get your question.
Jason. Is there a good time to, appropriate time to transplant, uh? The church trees?
I was. I, I couldn't answer that, uh, uh, I'm not, I'm not a landscape architect. Um, I can ask my landscape architect and get back to you.
Okay. Okay.
We.
We will try our.
If the requirements. Doesn't align with. Our schedule. Then we'll back. Just. See, it's already, I mean, most of that stuff can be even shown there is. So how do you? That's our point. Yeah, I know, that's what I mean. So that's why I think that. That's what made the draw up. I know there's a lot of stuff that is. Let's go on. I don't know what kind I covered. Do you want to read this?
Well, do we have, uh, he's gonna deliver in two weeks. What about a planting schedule? Are we like?
Yes, we should.
Everything needs to be finished by.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Well, when is everything gonna get done?
Oh, that kind of stuff. Like, schedule, schedule, there was, there was. Just a regular old, when you get it done, Mark, gosh. Okay.
Can we count those? I think. Times, you know. Consider with all the destruction, but it's too late for planting, so to get, oh. Express.
That's.
I mean, anything we put in?
Uh, I would say the fall, I would say, you know, by year end, I mean. That, that ought to do it. We're not talking about a whole lot of trees here.
No, 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 but it's, you gotta make sure that all the.
So what's your schedule for your, your project?
Well, we're ready to go on the switchgear within. I'd say probably within a month. Within this, this switchgear. I'm thinking one.
So. Ball.
Well, well, listen, there's a problem here.
Yeah, we'll save this up for Thursday first. Yeah, the person on the one course, it's like, so, yeah, it's not a character. All right.
She said she was a good reading.
I'm reading it.
No, I might, I, you might correct. Cause this, this really shouldn't take this long. I says, uh, you did a good landscape architect or architect. Somebody besides Nick, you know, but yeah.
The applicant is required to. A site plan, um, enlarged of the switch. Switchgear. Um, pad that shows dimensions of the pad from the road. On benchmark. Curved. Um, the switch. Um. All of the landscaping plan is shown on this current plan must be shown. And add two appropriately spaced trees. Um. That show on the plan, their current size and species. The intent of the plan is to add additional screening of the switchgear from the road. There's a condition that any planting on the original plan that does not exist any longer needs to be added when the site improvements are done. And it is clear that some of the starred plans on the plan do not currently exist or are stressed. In addition, provide the blow up site plan of each additional switch pad of the purple road visible from the center of the bug. Showing, um, fixed point. Um, benchmark. Um. The, the plans will be, are a modification of the formerly, um, approved site plan and except as modified here. And all findings and conditions of the prior approval are in full force and effect and unmodified. The plans are to be delivered to the department within two weeks of. Today, the department shall determine the sufficiency of the plans. And that they're in accordance with this approval. And if they are, then a building permit can be issued administratively. Um, verified that the ASBIL drawings of phase one have been delivered, or if they have not, they must be delivered. All work, um, is to be completed by December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three.
I would add to that the site layout for the areas that Doug just mentioned as well, you mentioned.
She does say, she kind of does say. Yeah, I think we covered all.
The additional switch plate areas, right?
Did you go on that switchgear?
Switchgear.
That's like the transform in the form.
Okay.
Doug, are we missing anything? I think we had. Okay, um, Kevin here wants, uh, wants to. I second move this motion.
I need this motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll second it. All favor. All right. So I don't know.
Press camp a bit.
Peter, I think that if he gets your answer, I think they ask questions. Yeah, well, I, I personally apologize that you had to wait.
We didn't think it takes.
No, we, we had, if, if, um. That was the concert.
I bet you do.
But having said that, my understanding is, is Terry, that we're. We're pretty comfortable with what you've done. We're waiting for the county, correct?
The county. That's, basically, that's what I told, uh, Terry. Um. And I told you it'd be on the agenda if. Become, oh, maybe I haven't. Then we're, then we're unable to get there on your agenda.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Right, so my question to you is, when you want to start?
It seems possible.
That's obvious. They submitted, um, fines to review for a building permit.
No, so from what I last spoke with Terry, she just said that we can have to, they stop as you get the review over to you guys there and then.
I think we can start the process.
Start the review, sure. Cause it's only two weeks. I don't know when the next, county next meeting is due to have happened. And it's gonna be.
The meeting is three weeks. Yeah.
Oh, we are, next meeting is in three weeks? No, we need it in three weeks.
Yeah, see, after our next meeting, which is the twenty-second or the twenty-eighth.
I think we've worked out all of the issues that we had. I mean, we need to. Finalize everything and, and certainly listen to what Sockville has to say, the county. Uh, but that's where you are. And we have the coming back now, we could be moving forward with.
Yeah, we might get on the agenda, but. Who was successful at the county?
Okay, yeah, all right. Um, so guess, we'll wait, you, are you gonna be, it's up to Terry then, she's gonna go, that's not what's gonna happen.
Yeah, but you can split your, uh.
The paperwork.
The paperwork will go, cause you know, turns back up.
I'm sorry.
This team.
Oh, happy lifting, it's done.
Cool, yeah.
Okay. So then we're good to go.
Sorry you had to wait.
Yeah, that was, um, that might be a little. Punished, punished right there, but.
Thank you.
And thanks. Um. What you doing there? Unanimous, uh, second.
Thank you.
New table.
Yeah, we, yeah, I got one question.
Yeah. So we got a.
It's called an application.
Put two little kids on there and see the actions we've been doing. So I put it in the. There was so much information going on. You ever seen. Well, there's too much information. Yeah. Well, that's our. So we go and.
Yeah.
I think. Your. They're accountable for that. It's about to get it on there, you see. Now, I. Probably play and be a safe. But we produce.
Yeah.
You see. I've been in mobile in order to get the case. Though, yeah, I don't speak about. So, you know, it's. I'm just. And central. And it's not enough. Should, I think, going on like. I said, I do, yes. It's easy.
So the material is. Yeah, maybe just. Yeah. She didn't acknowledge it.
Thank you again.
We need was. Should get around back. It's not. For. Yeah. Even. Only get to see this. Okay, nice.
Yeah.
She sounded bad. Yeah. But. Some points.
Okay.
One was four hundred other people. I just did. I've been telling this to people that.